Joining me in the council as we open our council meeting this evening with the pledge of allegiance and we'll follow the pledge of allegiance with an invocation brought by Councilman Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please balance retreat. Holy God, we humbly ask for your presence with us and your blessing upon us tonight as we address the business and the well-being of our city. Guide us in our actions and our decisions. Tonight, I especially thank you for our protectors, those first responders, the police, the firefighters, and the medical personnel who faithfully serve the people of this city. We ask that you put your hedge of protection around them and keep them safe as they place themselves at risk and in harm's way to protect us. Give them wisdom, strength, and courage each day. May we always show them our gratitude and never take for granted their sacrifice. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
All kinds of stuff here. We'll be moving right along this evening after our extensive workshop agenda to the citizens' concerns about items not on today's agenda. This is an opportunity for those of you here in the council chambers to address the city council on the open public record for concerns on items that are not a part of tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that would like to stand and speak to the city council? Please stand to the podium if you'd state your name and address, please.
My name is Brian Wagner. I live at 512 Shidley in Bonner Springs. We previous got a permit to close the road off at from I'm also representing Victory Assembly of God in Bonner. We got a permit to close the road off at Third and Cedar and also at Maple, right in front of the community center. We're having VBS Vacation Bible School for the kids in Bonner. It's very successful. Right now, we've got 84 kids. What I need, I'm asking to, we got permit right now for 6:30 to close the road off at 6:30 till 9 o'clock, but we're asking if we could just for Wednesday because to get the road closed off at 5:00 until 9:00 instead of 6:30 until 9:00 because we got inflatable rides for the kids to.
This Wednesday?
It's this Wednesday. I know it's a short notice, but we greatly appreciate if you could consider that. If not, you know, we appreciate it.
I think our city manager can take care of that for you.
It would actually, it's already been discussed, so you would have to approve it at an official meeting. I think it's on Wednesday. It's the early sort of public occasion process that has to occur.
Closing the road?
It's likely not able to be done.
The time?
Right. Do you guys would need to approve it covering the body? Because again, make any action on the citizen's side, so we have to have a meeting.
Okay. Is there a viable interim situation?
You could advertise for a post for a meeting. Now, let's say.
Is there another viable way to do that?
Could we have it after this meeting?
Then you'd have to provide it.
Gosh, we're coming up against time and hard-line requirements. You have it at 6:30 now?
Yes.
Yeah? And you're wanting to close the entire road, safety issues?
For safety issues because of the inflatable's coming at a certain time and it's just, it's going to be hard for them to sit up, for the kids to be able to ride on them.
Not able to see a safe, expeditious workaround. I'm sorry about that.
No.
But we'll certainly keep that in mind for future planning. And congratulations on the great Vacation Bible School.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Certainly, thank you. Anyone else that would like to stand and speak with the city council about an item not on tonight's agenda?
Does this world support us their thoughts?
There isn't an issue about that on tonight's agenda, so you can make your public comments now.
I'm Linda Harba, Bonner Springs Art Alliance Secretary, and I am here to support recommendation and reinstatement for Skip Dobbs for the Parks and Recreation Director. And as the secretary for the Arts Alliance, I have met several times with Skip and he has partnered with multiple projects for us for the North Park Memorial Monument for First Responders and Veterans. He's dedicated himself to meeting the goals of the Bonner Springs Parks and Recreation Department in every way. In 2017, he started working with the Arts Alliance back in 2014 when it originated. In 2017, he worked with the artist Anita Scheikos to provide a location for the monument. In 2017, in May, he provided, they delivered the tables and chairs for our dedication ceremony. In 2018, he assisted me with applying for a casino grant for possibility of having a shelter up there. He also assisted me with recommendations for Home Depot grant for a picnic table, grill, and trash can for up in that area. He, last week, assisted me with the placement of concrete benches, which I'd like to thank Roger Shannon for as well. And he's also arranged for me, in September, we're planning on engraving the wooden bench there with the city logo, which the USD 204 has agreed to assist us and provide the cost for that. And he's also worked with myself and Judy Shelton to have trees, shrubs, and flowers placed in the area, which I have spoken to Lowe's and the grass pad about donations and having discounts. And we've also discussed recommendations and designs for the Parks and Recreation Sculpture Project here in the city. And in July 2018, he was working with Anita Scheikos for a proposal of two engraved granite signs for the city of Bonner Springs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Burge. I'm a Bonner Springs resident and also president of the Arts Alliance. And I basically just want to agree with everything that Linda has said. Skip showed a great deal of interest in working with the Arts Alliance and was always very helpful. We had lots of different projects that we had discussed, such as mosaics and statues for the city, historical plaques. He was very helpful with all the events that we had, the Festival of the Arts, Marble Day, and as she said, worked with us extensively on the monument for police, fire, and first responders. So we just wanted to speak up on his behalf that he really did work well with us and we appreciated all the efforts on behalf of the Arts Alliance.
Thank you, Mrs. Burge. Anyone else?
No interdiction needed. George Cooper, 126 May, park board member. Love our town. Saul Lewinsky in Rules for Radical created a crisis. You create a crisis. Well, I believe a crisis got created here. Skip Dobbs did a good job. Hell, he lives here. He committed our town, more than you can say for some people. Come to work every day, every week, more than six hours a day, and came five days a week when he was supposed to. Skip did a good job, and I don't care what you hear tonight. I'm pretty involved. I go up there helping the garden with the kids. And I know Skip knows how to handle autistic kids. Some people may not see that. And you need to get all the facts. You need to get some of his side of this stuff. You know, the Arts Alliance. The ball got dropped, and not by Skip, by somebody else. And the ball got dropped on a sign we were going to get for the farmer's market. Never had a, some meetings we were supposed to go to. He's been a scapegoat for somebody else, and it's wrong. And you guys know it's wrong. Skip cares about this town. I don't care what you hear from a part-time city manager. You know, create a crisis, City Hall, Bridge Out. It's all this guy does. I'm ashamed I was involved in hiring him. Run a lot of good people off. He's going to say, Skip, everybody ever left Skip's department left for good jobs, better paying jobs. It's wrong they fired him. We can reinstate him. I really wish you guys really think about this. And that's all I have, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to stand and address the city council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the minutes from the June 25 city council meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims, public use requests for Back the Blue 5K, lawn inspection policy for the Public Housing Authority, Deborah Fisher Essential Massage Business Establishment Massage Therapist License, renewal and Morse Water Line and Water Treatment Plant improvements. I would ask, is there anything to be pulled by the staff, by the citizens? Questions, concerns, comments by the council?
Once I found out that TNT was the fireworks place, I.
There you go.
D, I don't need it pulled, but I was just expressing support for it and appreciation that we're doing something like that in Bonner Springs for our police.
Very good. Thank you. Seeing nothing, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Second, moved and seconded. Vote, please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
On to the regular meeting agenda. Item number one, the final plat PT 18103 for Lake Forest Hills Lot Sides. Lots number one and two, staff.
Good morning, Mayor. Don Slone, city planner. This comes for you tonight with unanimous recommendation. The planning commission approved the final plat. Your governing body accept the dedication of the easement. There's only an easement on this. Right away, it's where the Lake of Forest. Larry Haudes here tonight is the applicant. Would you like to answer any questions?
Very good. Thank you. Anything to add? Nope. Very good. Seeing none, and nothing else from the citizens, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the dedication of the easement depicted in the final plat, Lake of Forest Hill Side Lots One and Two.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here. Sure. Vote, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Are you hearing anything?
Yes. Onto item number two, the final plat PT 18104, Lake Forest Club Breat plat of Lot 130. Staff.
Don Slone again. This can also come to unanimous, move to the planning commission. This is a little bit different as there are no dedications. However, from a procedural perspective, we don't file plats without the mayor's signature, the city clerk's signature, and the chairman of the planning commission and the secretary. Therefore, comes to you tonight to that recommendation.
Very good. Anything to add? Nope. All right. Very good. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the final plat of the Lake Forest Club Replat, Lot 130.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We'll start down here. Any concerns, questions, comments?
None. Right here.
Seeing none. Vote, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Are you hearing anything?
Yes. Item number three, the Santa Fe Shite Water Line Upgrade Project. Staff.
Rick Snyder, Public Works Director. This item pertains to a project that we have semi-planned. I'll try to make it brief, but explain everything. The Santa Fe Water Line actually is a short section of four-inch line that runs from Loring to Woodin. There also, at that point, turns to Shite Water Line, which runs north of us. We've got two developer developments occurring down at the Loring-Front Street area. The Blue Bell project is already under development, and the Drop and Recreation Services Center, which is planning development at the old Crowes Building. The existing water lines in that section of the city are insufficient for fire flows for these buildings. I don't know, can't talk too much about the history, but we've ran flow tests on those lines, including the flow test data that we had in 1989. It wasn't much difference than what it is today. Recommendation that we need from council or at least a consensus is to move forward with spending some money on researching the design for that water line. Right now, we've done a quote from our city engineer for about $3,000 to do some hydraulic analysis. We believe the Shite Water Line, either a good portion of it or all of it, should come and need to be replaced and upgraded to a larger water line. We do have water lines coming from the east down Bluegrass that's also a four-inch line. That one will be very expensive to replace because of the numerous taps on that line. And then there's also a line coming off from the Coney Feed that comes across Spring Creek. Once again, it's a very small line. Our biggest advantage would be upgrading that Shite Water Line. We had some budget authority, or at least we had a plan for 2019 to do the Santa Fe line that was in our existing IP. We didn't have anything to do the rest of that line right now. So the numbers that you see and the financial impact vary a little bit depending on how far we actually have to build that pipe. If we have to do our major pump, you're looking at about $1,000. Wow. It's not in project funding or in-house. We just need consensus from council to start that process with some thought process that we would have to build that water line based on this development occurring and the need to identify water pressure flow. I can answer questions?
Very good. Thank you. Anything to add by anyone here in the audience?
If you guys perceive, what would be the timeline for upgrading the water line?
Probably a minimum of six months would be close, yeah. We'll probably look at, you know, 90 days for design and get it designed in detail.
So theoretically, after the first year?
In that timeline.
Other questions, concerns, comments?
You have run, you will know when your water flow is going to be before you guys start to.
Absolutely would, right. We've done some in-house calculations.
Okay.
So.
I'm Mark Newell, by the way.
Hi, we've talked on the phone, haven't we? But our city engineers, they'll be able to run some hydraulic analysis through their department to determine. I mean, it's a matter of upsizing this one pipeline, whether we put in an eight-inch or 12-inch is kind of a city decision, but right now, we've got a four-inch. And we believe that four-inch that we thought only ran to Woodin actually runs all the way to Tracy, which on the map that I supplied city council is about halfway up Shite. So there's a point there we need to know, we need to know, and I can't tell you that tonight exactly how far that four-inch runs to the north. The four inches is what's killing us. Six inches helps a little bit, but if we end up replacing that pipe, it might have some advantage to just replace it all the way to Coney.
Very good. Anything else? Seeing nothing? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to publish a bid notice for the Santa Fe Shite Water Line Upgrade Project.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and we'll start down here with any questions, concerns, comments?
No. No question.
Yeah?
Very good.
All right. Vote, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Congratulations. I know it's not as fast as what anyone would want, but I think we'll do the best we can.
Appreciate all that.
Yeah? Thank you. Moving along to item number four, youth ball-ball leagues and fees.
Ben Hass, Recreation Coordinator. Please use your time tonight. Little background, five area communities, Turner, Edwardsville, Lansing, Baser, Tonga, and Oxy currently partner with Bonner Springs to offer the Colled Valley Summer Ball Program. Turner, Edwardsville, and Bonner have discussed since last winter the possibility of offering a fall baseball league for T-ball and machine pitch. T-ball would be four to six years old, machine pitch would be seven to eight. T-ball is co-rec. Machine pitch will be two separate leagues, baseball and softball. This will be a pilot program. If it is successful, the 9-10 age division will offer in 2019, so on. We are looking for city council to approve fees of $20 for T-ball and $30 for machine pitch for the fall baseball and softball league. And I have some more background discussion notes if you guys have any other questions.
Very good. Thank you. Anything from the citizens? Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the youth fall league fees.
Second.
Moved and several seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here.
Good for the kids.
No questions.
Play ball.
Nice.
So you have T-ball, and then you have machine pitch, and then maybe if this is successful, you'll have kid hit?
The plan is you have to start 9-10 in 2019, and then 11 and 12 in 2020, and then.
9-10, is that coach?
9-10-year-old, that'd be the kid pitch league, the beginning of the kid pitch league and something like that, so.
Kid hit. I mean, they don't, they hit the kids more than they.
Yeah, the kids pitch, yeah.
Is that what they call it?
Yeah, we call it kid pitch. Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
But this has been something that's been asked a lot of me.
Not good for the kids.
When do you see the, ideally, this beginning and ending? How long will the season be?
I think we're planning on starting the last Wednesday in September and going through most of October, so about five weeks. And we'll play the occasional Sunday night, but it's a Wednesday night league. It's a doubleheader league, you know?
Oh, okay.
So I think we're probably expecting hopefully about 60 to 70 kids this first time around, and then hopefully keep building.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Very good. Seeing no other comments, questions, concerns? Vote, please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Onto our reports, the first from the city manager.
Just quickly, a reminder, the budget session will continue on Monday, July 16th. We're planning to be actually at 6:00 at 5:30. Also want to point out and thank publicly, there was a group of youth members and leaders in the Land Church. Church that is trying to actually build a church here in town, but they went through several parts of the community. On July 5th, we broke up into four different teams. We're at Springfield Park, Springfield, while there's one with the grass lawn department.
Can you get online?
There's a base coffee, which is where they started. They've been at Coney, Nettleton, Alceth, Morris, picking up grass.
I probably did three times.
Also, we have a stormwater master plan meeting scheduled for Thursday, July 19th, 5:00 a.m. in this chamber. Again, this is the intent by the city to take on a stormwater master plan that first city has done that will help prioritize the projects on that system for the next 20 years. And I also just want to publicly point out as well as thank an individual that I've got to know in my time here that after a 14-year tenure with the city has decided to retire. And I just want to thank Don Slone for everything that he's done with the city in his 14 years of service, and will continue to do until his last day, no doubt, on October 1st, which is a Sunday. He's reminded me since last week. And a great individual, and I certainly thank him for his dedication and care with that time. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to other reports, city council items, and I think we'll start down here. Mr. Reeves?
Yes. On the, I forgot what I was going to say. Come back to me.
Okay. All right. We will.
Just a couple items that were on the, do you remember it?
What? No.
A couple items that were on the city manager's report for the, see, now you got me doing it. Stormwater master plan. I thought about attending it. I didn't know if that was in any issue with too many elected officials, quorum showing up. I don't know if anybody else is planning.
Yeah.
I think if anybody's planning to attend, you can just drop a note to Amber. That way, in case we get into a situation where we need to call them on special meeting, that would be the best way.
Okay. And then actually, a question for Amber. The coma, quorum, I'm considering that. What date do you have to have confirmation by?
I didn't have a deadline to register, but usually it's the sooner the better because they can fill up pretty quickly. I usually.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Sir?
Don, thank you for your service. And 14 years is, a lot of stuff's happened in Bonner, I'm sure, during that time, so thank you. Also, thanks for bringing SFS architecture in. That was neat to see the whole thing out of the ground, at least, and, you know, give you kind of a concept. And I would continue to ask that we keep showing that to people. I think they will understand the money being spent if they see the pictures and just understand where that's heading and what's going on. So if that's possible, I'll keep requesting that. Also, the city website, you know, when you click on the utility bill, you have to click through a couple of times to pay your utility bill. Is that going to be fixed? Why do we have to link to that old site and all that? I don't know if that's something we can modify. It's just kind of goofy.
Yeah.
Seems like it should be one click, but you have to jump to the old. Other than that, that's all I've got.
Very good. Anne?
I just want to thank all the city people who oversee the city because the depth of things that you have to deal with and the things that you, wow. I mean, just wow.
Thank you, Don. Bless you.
Don, I wanted to say thanks as well. I've known you since I was a little kid, literally. I've known you half of my life, nearly, and it's been a pleasure working with you for the short seven months that I have, but appreciate all the help with all the projects we've done. I have one other thing. I'm unaware of what happened with Skip. I don't know anything about it, but I will say.
Mr. Mackey, this is a personnel issue.
Oh, okay.
And perhaps you might want to wait until the executive session to bring up any personnel issues.
Thank you. I will hold all comments. Thank you, guys.
Done. There's, I think that there's a lot of things that people don't realize, what you've done for our city over the years and stuff, and I think the one thing that has always stuck out in my mind was QuickTrip, where we were told there would be no way that QuickTrip would, that's not the place, and you had a contact, and you made that contact, and you've got that. And I think that's just kind of the tip of the iceberg of all this stuff. of all the stuff you've done. And secondly, and most importantly, you're a Jayhawk. Also, sitting here in front of...
He's a Jayhawk.
I'm sure I've had a chance to meet you, but Linda, I've had, over the years, I've known you a long time, and you talk about an art teacher that was far and above everything else, and your commitment to the Art Alliance, both of you, and to Anita and stuff, and the, if you get a chance to go up there to the memorial, it's up there by Fun Valley.
It's very neat.
What they've done and stuff, and the, oh, those light park benches Saturday.
And how long can Roger hold a seat in midair while I'm adjusting?
Adjusting and, you know, liquid nails. No, but what Art Alliance has brought to our town, gee, it's just, thanks are not enough, believe me, but it's a real testament to all of you, and we appreciate it.
Very good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all.
That's all, I'm sorry.
Very good. Thank you. I'd also like to thank everyone who took the time out of their busy lives to come in and make a comment. We appreciate all the involvement for all the different issues that we have, and so, thank you very much. We, really, this evening was quite a long meeting for us, and one of the portions of the workshop was a presentation by our district attorney, and I don't know if everyone had an opportunity to catch part of that, but I really think we're being served here in Bonner Springs better than we've ever been served before by the district attorney and the cooperation that we have in the police department, and it's becoming more and more evident. So, I greatly appreciate the police department's level of professionalism and his level of professionalism. I think we'll see real improvements in our life, quality of life here in western Wyandotte County and Bonner Springs. So, that was very encouraging. And as far as compliments to the city on their fireworks, the Bonner Blast, and all the people that contributed to that, it's a real community event. I'm sorry I missed it this year, but I've heard nothing but compliments. As well as the city band continues to be very well attended. I think the farmer's market has been a great addition to the Thursday nights down at the park and continues to improve that opportunity. I think we're going in the right direction and trying to bolster both of those entities, the new beginning of the farmer's market and establishing that still, as well as continuing to support the band. This Bonner Springs City Band, not many cities have their own city band, but we have it, and it's exemplary, as well as the charitable groups that come and bring the ice cream and homemade treats. I think the Peach Cobbler earlier this season was so far my blue ribbon pick. We may have to start the mayor's blue ribbon pick over the course. That may be, that may be something we could do.
Simon.
I could get behind that. The Morris Waterline project that you alluded to, that won't hold up the resurfacing of West Morris? Is that the Morris Waterline?
Actually, that waterline is running from K-32 up Morris to the Cornell. It retires into our existing transmission line.
So, will that be done in connection with the CES project, or is that apart from that, or?
It's somewhat apart from it. We've got plans to be able to tie the lines back in together, but the Cornell line is actually just west of where the Morris Waterline ends. That tie-in is literally just about 100 feet east of Cornell.
All right. Maybe it shouldn't. I don't know. But the majority of the street improvement program that we're going to enjoy this summer, when will it kick off?
Actually, we got a contract ready to go Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
Excellent.
Yeah, that's a part of, somebody's, a part of about $1.3 million worth of road improvements. You alluded to the study we did on the condition of the roads, and these improvements are not only to isolate the roads that need the improvement the most, but the assets in the city that will benefit the most and protect our assets the most over the long term for these, this infrastructure. It's our most valuable infrastructure, the roads. I was surprised. I thought our water system would be. I'm sorry, Rick. I mean, yeah, streets are very valuable, and we have some issues in Bonner Springs for everyone. Patience is all I ask for. It's going to be quite a summer for a lot of us, and recognizing after the streets are improved, we'll then have a lot more complaints about fast traffic, and you can send those straight to Chief. It is amazing. I've had much more complaints about traffic, speeds of traffic after a road's been approved than the rough roads beforehand. So, that's small town for you, but we're growing as best we can. Unless there's any questions for me, that concludes my mayor's, oh, 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 not, that concludes my mayor's report, but the city manager has requested...
Mr. Reeves finally remembers.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Couple things. Don, thank you for your service. Appreciate that. We've had several conversations over the year, and he's led me to believe he's right in several cases, and a couple of cases I didn't think so, but we still get along with it, and you did a good job, Don. Thank you very much. On Seven Highway South, I noticed there was an amber light out, Amber, okay? And also on Seven Highway, the median there, I know that's probably not our responsibility, but there's a lot of stuff growing in that median that really looks unsightly for Bonner Springs. I know it's probably the State Department should take care of that, but they're not doing it, and so I don't know what to do about it. It puts a bad light on Bonner Springs. Had a couple of people mention that to me here recently. Thank you for getting the brush cut down at Metropolitan and Nettleton. That got taken care of, and on Lakewood, there's still a bushy thing coming up there at Silver Hill, more of a Silver Hill.
Bushy.
Yeah.
For those bushy things.
Overgrown tree. Other than that, I'm happy to be here.
Very good. Yes, thank you, Don, for all you've done. Watching out for Bonner Springs, appreciate it. And that brings me to the city manager's request for a 20-minute executive session to discuss the performance of an employee. I would entertain a motion and reference the specific, no, and reference the specific wording on our agenda, electronic agenda.
I make a motion. Will we go into executive session for 20 minutes?
Seconded. Don't we have to say all these words? Okay, you have to say all the words right here.
For non-elected personnel matters. Not quite.
No.
Here we go.
Would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the performance of an employee pursuant to the non-elected personnel matters exception, KSA 75-431, 4319, subsection B, subsection 1. The open meeting will resume in the city council at, you said 20 minutes, so at 8:33?
So moved.
He has a better computer.
And seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Seeing none. Thank you all very much. This is a closed session. You're welcome to come back in in 20 minutes. If you'd like, you'll have to stand outside.